Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. I'd number one is call to order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you're here to speak on items designated as public hearing items later on in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council and I will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn to come forward. I'd now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We're now going to play a video containing the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. We're now going to play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Oatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you very much. We're now going to turn to item number four, meeting minutes. Tonight I'll be assisted by Vice Mayor Adams. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the city council minute meetings, items 4A1 through 4A3.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by council member Keating. Please vote.
My voting thing's not working. Oh, wait, I got it.
There we go. And that item passes unanimously seven to zero. Next up here, item 4B, acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to accept the board commission and committee meeting minutes, items 4B1 through 4B7.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Do I have a second? Seconded by council member Hodge. Please vote. And that item also passes unanimously seven to zero. Next up, item number five, reports and announcements. I have a number of announcements and I'll go down front. All right. I think I've got six of these this evening. That's why I was drinking water up there. I was just trying to get prepared. So the first item here, if I could have, let's see, the members of the Tempe Women's Club join me up front. That would be fantastic. I know, I know. So this proclamation reads, whereas during fiscal year 2223 in Arizona, 43,812 reports were made to the Department of Child Safety. Child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Arizona, and child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse and neglect. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to continue to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families in Arizona. And whereas the city of Tempe urges all residents to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 2024 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Tempe, Arizona. Next up here, I have our Neurodiagnostic Week proclamation. And it's the Arizona ASET Neurodiagnostic Society here. Oh, there we go. Didn't even need a cue. I love it.
I'm excited.
Love it. That's great. How are you?
I'm very good.
Cory Woods, nice to meet you as well. And this proclamation reads, neurodiagnostics is the practice of analyzing and monitoring central and peripheral nervous system function to promote the effective treatment of neurological diseases, injury, and impairment. And whereas neurodiagnostic technologists play a paramount role in the diagnosis and treatment of a variety of neurological conditions, including epilepsy, unexplained coma, sleep disorders, autonomic disorders, and spinal cord injuries. And whereas neurodiagnostic technologists contribute to surgical treatment by monitoring the central and peripheral nervous system during high-risk procedures such as surgery for scoliosis, cartoid artery disease, brain tumors, and spine trauma, thereby guarding against neurological complications during surgery and helping reduce risk of negative surgical outcomes such as paralysis or stroke. And whereas neurodiagnostic technologists are engaged in lifelong learning, dedicated to a life of service and compassion, have the greatest respect for the worth and dignity of individuals, and are devoted to the best interest of the patient while providing the highest-quality patient care. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 14th through the 20th, 2024, as Neurodiagnostic Week in Tempe, Arizona. Next up, if I could have folks from the Community Services Parks and Rec Department join me up here to accept this next proclamation. Thank you, Craig. Alex. This one is for Arbor Month. And so this proclamation reads, whereas J. Sterling Morton first proposed a tree planting holiday in 1872 to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture to be called Arbor Day. And whereas April is set aside each year in Tempe to encourage citizens to devote their time and energy to planting trees. And whereas 2024 marks the 152nd anniversary of the holiday, which is celebrated around the world and here locally. And whereas during the month, city departments and staff engage with business partners, local organizations, and residents to appreciate and plant trees. And whereas native and drought-tolerant non-native trees can cool our communities, making us more resilient to extreme heat while enhancing the beauty of Tempe, offering shelter to wildlife, and providing numerous environmental, economic, and societal health benefits for our community. And whereas the Tempe City Council recognizes the importance of trees and supports the investment in Tempe's sustainable urban forest and green space programs, now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 2024 as Arbor Month in Tempe, Arizona. You know, I hear all this talking, and I wonder what's going on back here. Oh, it's him? Oh, yes, yes. It's Mr. Ficus himself, Councilmember Navarro. We love you, brother. All right, next up here, we have the Week of the Young Child proclamation. And let's see, I have Rebecca Hitekamp. And who else do I have? Come on up. Hello. And this proclamation reads, whereas all of Arizona's children deserve access to quality early care and education environments, and whereas quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during the critical years from birth to age five. And whereas ECE teachers and childcare providers are the essential workforce that helps Arizona parents get to work or school. And whereas funding quality childcare is a smart investment that improves family well-being, strengthens communities, and grows our state's prosperity. And whereas First Things First, Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children and other community organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 53rd anniversary of the Week of the Young Child. And whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in Tempe. And whereas public policies that support ECE for Arizona's youngest learners help our families, communities, and the economy thrive. And whereas the city of Tempe encourages all residents to support and invest in early care and education in our community. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 6th through the 12th, 2024, as the Week of the Young Child in Tempe, Arizona. If I could now have members of our police department come join us, Chief McCoy, and you and any other member of your team. This is a week for telecommunications. So this proclamation reads, whereas the public safety dispatch professionals of the city of Tempe Police Communication Center provide lifesaving services vital to the people in our community in partnership with all city departments, including Tempe Fire Medical Rescue, CARE7, homeless outreach, transportation, and our neighboring jurisdictions. And whereas 911 call takers assist the caller with over-the-phone support and emergency instruction that save lives every day on every shift, handling over 151,072 calls for service in 2023, and performing heroically despite ongoing staffing impacts. And whereas police dispatchers provide the critical connection between those experiencing an emergency and the responding emergency crews, ensuring that the commensurate personnel and resources are dispatched to the call. And whereas tactical radio operators provide a lifesaving and critical communications function in connecting public safety agencies and personnel to one another on scene and en route to hospitals. And whereas police communications personnel are our community's first responders, daily working above and beyond the call of duty in situations of great stress and suffering to facilitate resolution of emergency situations, including codes and deaths, drownings, vehicle collisions, fires, and other emergency calls for service. And whereas the health and safety of the Tempe community and its residents greatly depends on these services and the dedicated professionals who daily provide them. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 14th through the 20th, 2024, as Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Tempe, Arizona. And the last proclamation I have this evening, if there are members from the Community Health and Human Services team that would like to join me down front for this, I see Tim Birch. All right. So this proclamation is in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. You'll see all the turquoise lapel pins and ribbons that a lot of us have on this evening. And this one reads, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month raises critical awareness about the impact that sexual violence has on children, youth, adults, and families in our community, and spotlight spotlights the wide range of resources available through Tempe's Community Health and Human Services Department, Tempe Police Department, and Tempe Fire Medical Rescue. And whereas sexual violence refers to any type of unwanted sexual contact in which a person did not consent. Consent cannot be given if a person is under the influence of alcohol or drugs, asleep, unconscious, or otherwise incapacitated or underage. And whereas every 68 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the United States. And for every nine minutes that pass, that person is a child, according to the U.S. Department of Justice. And whereas 1 in 4 women and about 1 in 26 men have experienced completed or attempted sexual violence, according to the CDC. And whereas the city's CARE7 Victim Services Team served 360 individuals and families who reported sexual violence, including child sexual violence, last year. And whereas the city of Tempe continues to invest in and advance the work of our Family Advocacy Center, which provides a welcoming and confidential space to connect individuals and families with free resources, assist through the continuum of care, and initiate the healing process. And whereas the Family Advocacy Center brings together the expertise, dedication, and compassion of our CARE7 victim advocates and Tempe Police Department to address wide-ranging needs, and includes an important partnership with Arizona State University and the support of our Family Justice Commission. And whereas the recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month shows support for all individuals and their families, regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. And whereas the city of Tempe urges all Arizonans to work toward ending sexual violence by empowering people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need, implementing effective interventions and prevention, and discussing safety, healthy relationships, and reaching out for help. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona. Next up, item 5A7, our Neighborhood Celebration Announcement. Now, there's going to be a slide shown during this presentation. So our Neighborhood Celebration is going to take place this Saturday between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. at the Kiwanis Park Fiesta Ramadas. It's a wonderful, wonderful celebration. The biggest compliment, I think, that all of us get for people who've attended this celebration over the last couple of years is, this event truly feels like Tempe. It's just a good time recognizing neighbors and community members who do fantastic work to make the city of Tempe what it is. And so I would encourage each and every one of you to come join us this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at the Kiwanis Park Fiesta Ramadas, and enjoy a great Neighborhood Celebration and some live music, and lots of awards for some very well-deserving people. Next up, item 5B, City Managers Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, one announcement. One of the things that perhaps is a good reminder for ourselves and for the public is oftentimes when we get public comments and it's not agendized, it's very tough because we're not able to respond to the work that the community or that the workforce is doing. I know that our city attorney, Eric Anderson, has explained that I'm able to at least speak to the work that I am doing with our great team to one of the items that you will hear about from our very residents tonight. So last August, 2023, the city manager's office decided to move forward and look at the safety in our streets, traffic safety. Our team has adopted a Vision Zero goal, and one of the things that we looked at as a city manager's office is how do we help support our staff with either resources, technology, innovation strategies? City of Tempe is a very data-driven organization. We decided to call together that team to really accelerate the work that we knew that we could do better in. August 11th, 2023, we assembled that team. It is a 21-member multidisciplinary task force, including city manager's office, police department, transportation and sustainability, municipal courts, public works, Neighborhood Services Office, information technology, strategic management and innovation, and of course, communication and marketing. The work is really to challenge each other and say, what strategies are we implementing through engineering or enforcement to create greater safety on our streets, which tends to be the number one issue for our residents? I'm happy to share that after nine meetings, we always had a goal, always start with the end in mind, which is, when will we be ready to present those strategies that we have currently or are implementing in the near future? It is agendized for April 18th at a work study for you and for our residents to know about all the things that we are moving forward. I'm very proud of that team. We will be bringing forward education strategies, engineering strategies, and more enforcement strategies, and be more nimble in responses to the needs of this community. So I wanted to make sure and honor the work of this workforce, but also to share with our residents that we hear you, we understand, we too are there with you as residents ourselves, and we know that, and we're confident that the strategies that we're going to bring forward are going to help create greater safety in our community. So thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to share that.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Appreciate it. That brings us to item number six, public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while attending the city council meeting, or while attending the meeting, I should say. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. With that, once again, I will call the speakers in the order in which I received the cards this evening. I believe I have 13 cards. The first speaker I have this evening is Joseph Kefer. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
All right. I'm Joseph Kefer, resident of the city of Tempe. I've come here multiple other times to address you guys about the conditions of the alleys. You know, they're dirty places, they're unsafe, and still to this day, the only thing that I've gotten done about my alley is having no trespassing signs put up. And I can tell you right now that the no trespassing has not been enforced in the alley. This week alone, I've had three separate incidents of illegal dumping. The first one was some dirt, weeds, and a lot of dog feces. The dog feces have still yet to be cleaned up. It smells terrible back there right now. There's flies everywhere. They're coming into my yard. I've called the city multiple times about this. Another one was hazardous substance. A bunch of oil was left back there, and it was brought to my attention that a bunch of tires. This is all within the last week. And I want something to be done about these alleys. You guys have, you know, redone your community development, you know, team to include more enforcement officers. Those officers can't enforce illegal dumping or trespassing. So what is the point of having this community development, you know, enforcement team if they can't do anything about it? And they're not, and obviously, with three dumping incidents in the last week, you know, they're not helping. They're not helping to stop the issue. So I'm coming here for the third time to ask you guys to do something about these alleys, to clean them up and to make them safer. They're not safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker I have is Nicole Gutierrez Miller. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Woods, Vice Mayor Adams, council members and staff. My name is Nicole Gutierrez Miller. I'm a parent in both the Chirene and Tempe Union Districts, a lifelong Arizonan and an active community member. Tonight, I'm coming to you to talk about safe travel paths and plans for Corona and Chirene del Cielo students. Currently, students and community members leaving the Corona del Sol Estates via bike or foot have to either jaywalk or into the neighborhoods east of McClintock, which are deemed too close to be serviced by school buses in the Tempe Union District. I'm requesting action and decisions to be made related to the installation of a pedestrian crossing across McClintock Drive at LaVive or Caroline Lanes in South Tempe. As concerned parents and community members, it is our collective responsibility to ensure the safety of students as they commute to and from school each day. Currently, the lack of designated pedestrian crossings near Corona del Sol Estates poses a significant safety hazard to our students and community members. The heavy traffic on McClintock makes it challenging for pedestrians to navigate safely, especially during peak traffic hours. I have spoken with residents in Corona del Sol Estates, including those who live on LaVive Lane, and they are supportive of a pedestrian crossing similar to what exists along the canal. In fact, some of those same neighbors expressed support for a similar crossing years ago, but the effort failed. Installing a pedestrian crossing at this location would not only enhance the safety of our students, but also promote a culture of pedestrian-friendly transportation within our community. It would provide a designated space for students to cross safely and reduce the risk of traffic-related injuries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Miriam Spencer. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Miriam Spencer, and I live in Tempe. I'm a student at Corona del Sol High School, and in order to get to and from school every day, I have to cross at the Warner and McClintock Crossing. I have had numerous close calls with distracted and unsafe drivers, and already three of my friends have been hit by cars. And the trip to and from school would be much safer if there was a pedestrian crosswalk on LaVive, creating a safer and less risky place for me and all of my friends and family to get to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Just as a quick note too, because I know many of the cards are speaking to this issue this evening, if Eric Iverson and Shelley Seiler, could you raise your hands for a quick second, just so people could see you? They're the two individuals who run our Transportation Department, and I know our city manager made a reference earlier that it's very tough when we can't respond when things aren't on the official agenda, but they've definitely offered to speak to anyone who'd like to talk about transportation or any of these issues. So please feel free to approach them during the meeting or after the meeting, they will be here for the duration. So just wanted to make sure I put that out there. The next speaker I have this evening is Samantha Spencer. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Samantha Spencer, and I'm a resident of Tempe. In order to get to and from my school, Grand Central Middle School, I have to cross the crosswalk at McClintock and Warner. I have had many close calls with drivers who are either distracted or haven't looked very closely, and it is very, very scary at times. And it would be much safer for many people, for not only me, but many people that I know, to get a crosswalk at LaVive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have this evening is Jacob Spencer. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
All right. Hello. My name is Jacob Spencer. I'm a resident of Tempe. I live in the Altamira neighborhood. For the kids in our neighborhood to get to their home schools, the elementary, junior high, and high school, they have to cross McClintock. The closest intersection to us is Warner McClintock, and there is no signaled intersection for the better part of a mile going south. Both of my daughters, as you just heard from, do regularly bike to school. I love that they do that. I love the freedom and independence that biking gives them, but I do hate that it is more dangerous than driving them. So at that intersection, drivers are often undistracted, they don't look for pedestrians. Our neighborhood has had three kids hit over the last several years. We're averaging about one kid getting in an accident per year. So there's definitely proof that there is a safety issue. I would like to, our neighborhood has asked the city through speaking at council, through petitions, several times over the last decade for a safer way for our kids to get to school. There is an at-grade crossing at LaVive and McClintock that's referenced in the Tempe Transportation Master Plan multiple times. So we'd like to ask for council to finally move on that and accelerate getting our kids a safer way to get to their schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Jonathan Gilmore. Is Jonathan Gilmore here? Next up, I have Tiffany Good. Is Tiffany Good here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jonathan Gilmore was actually virtual.
Oh, okay, okay.
Jonathan, you may unmute your mic.
Mr. Gilmore, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Sounds good. Can you please state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Darren Gilmore. I am currently a resident in Glendale. I was a former resident in the City of Tempe. I'm speaking on behalf of Austin Davis and Arizona Hugs. I have known Austin for the last few years, and not only do I consider him to be an amazing friend, I also honor and thank him for saving my life and as well, my well-being when it was in a state of crisis. Austin was one to add sunshine to my days of darkness, and when I had no one to call, to talk to, or to figure out where my next meal was coming from, utter hopelessness and despair was all that surrounded me until Austin gave me a sense of hope and love that I thought couldn't exist at that time. On Halloween night 2023, I decided I wanted to change my life around and get sober, wanting a happier, healthier life. So who did I turn towards for the help and resources that could be provided to me? None other than Austin, who was front and center to help and always encourage me. I would like to make a request to please have more leniency on Austin and to grant approval for his permit that hosts the homeless feeds at Papico Park on Sundays, so he can continue to help others the way he helped me. Austin shows nothing but love and respect to the homeless community, and always is and always will be front and center to help people change their lives for the better. I, along with others, are living proof that this nonprofit organization works and has helped in ways I have never seen before. I thank you for your time to hear me, and I really hope you can reconsider my request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going back next, is Tiffany Good in the audience or in the virtual audience? Nope? Okay. The next speaker I have is Matt Schmel. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Mayor Woods, council members. My name is Matt Schmel. I am a Tempe resident, and yet again, I am speaking on behalf of Buena Vista Ranchos, Calle de Cabios, and Sundhurst Farms neighborhoods. In 1995, the Tempe City Council proved Shady Lane with explicit legal limitations, including the bridle path easement, legal requirements that Tempe needs to enforce now. I know that the council discussed this issue at the executive session this afternoon, and I trust the new city attorney, Eric Anderson, welcome aboard, Eric, has or will competently advise you on the issue of Mr. Nerwin moving 328 feet of wall 10 feet out into the bridle path easement in violation of the legal requirement on the plat map, which was a condition of the Shady Lane neighborhood. Requirements I point out that also include the easements to the City of Tempe for sidewalks and service access. His advice should match the 2021 outside legal opinion, telling Tempe, you have a duty to enforce the city code and plat map conditions. The neighborhoods are hopeful that city attorney Anderson will properly evaluate the threatening letter from Mr. Nerwin and its weak arguments, arguments that were strongly refuted by our attorney's letter to Tempe in September of 2022, and following that review, advised the city council to enforce the code to remove the offending wall. Of note, Nerwin's letter is the idea adopted by the prior city attorney that the plat map didn't meet the definition of a plan required by code. That weak and absurd argument, straight out of the Nerwin letter, fails miserably when it is considered that every time a Tempe resident files a permit application citing variances on the plat maps, Tempe acknowledges their legality and allows the exception, which Tempe has now done with respect to issued permits for Mr. Nerwin in his application to build a poolhouse and shade structure. And again, Tempe certainly relied on the easements benefiting the city that are also documented on the plat map. The failure of Tempe to enforce the city code is of concern to our neighborhoods as it impacts property values, and has already resulted in many expressing that building permits aren't needed, as Tempe has set the precedent that the code will not be enforced. Mayor Woods, council members, this encroaching wall on the bridle path is a violation of the legal stipulations of the plat map and the requirements of the Tempe city code, and you all swore an oath to uphold those codes. 250 households of frustrated voters are expecting you to uphold the code and remove this encroaching wall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Alex Monti. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Excuse me. Hi, my name is Alex Monti, and I'm a homeowner in Tempe. I grew up in Tempe. I'm a fifth-generation resident of the Valley. My great-great-grandparents lived in Phoenix. My grandparents owned a home in Tempe until their death last year. My parents own a home in Tempe, and now I'm raising two kids. And I am here to speak on behalf of AZ Hugs and Austin Davis, because my daughter, my older kid, volunteers with AZ Hugs every Sunday. My mom makes food, and my kid takes trays of food and serves them to populations in need at parks around Tempe. And now every Sunday, I'm holding my breath because I'm wondering if the cops are going to intervene, as they have for the last 10 weeks or whatever. It doesn't really fit my values, or the values that I grew up with here in Tempe, to criminalize this kind of charitable organization, and specifically to come down on Austin Davis, who is clearly an amazing resource for the city and many of its people who have needed shelter, who have needed services, detox, even just basic day-to-day, everyday needs, like food and camping equipment and whatever they need, Austin Davis is there. People don't go to the City of Tempe, they go to Austin Davis. And why is that? Because City of Tempe is approaching the houseless community with police, and we know that cops are not safe, not for any population, but especially when you criminalize houselessness. And I just find it really ironic that the City of Tempe is saying they're addressing houselessness and providing solutions, and meanwhile, you're sending out to every single person who gets a water bill in Tempe, a little announcement on their water bill, "Do Not Help the Homeless." I mean, I feel like I'm living in Bizarro World. I just don't understand where those values come from and how you justify that to yourself. And I would hate to have my kid be at one of these events and get cited, and it compromised their ability to, you know, get into the college that they were accepted to, a college which accepted them based on a lot of their community work, including a really nice letter from Austin Davis to the college itself. And I think that, I don't want to forget to say anything, but to me, I've looked at a lot of studies about curing...
That's time, unfortunately. I'm sorry. The next speaker I have this evening is Nicole Leonardi. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Mayor Woods, can I ask if my daughter can go first? She's right after me.
Absolutely. The next speaker this evening is Olive Leonardi.
Hi, I'm Olive Leonardi. I'm 15. Hi, I'm Olive Leonardi. I'm 15 years old. I live in Tempe AZ, and I'm a freshman at Corona del Sol High School. Just last Friday, while riding my bike home from school, I was hit by a car on McClintock south of Warner Road. So sorry if I do sound a little bit druggy right now. I was riding north on McClintock to LaVive, and someone exited the shopping center, did not see me, and collided with me as she pulled out of the lot. It was not her fault, it was just an accident caused by bad timing and my inability to find a safer way to cross the road. As I was riding up McClintock to use the crosswalk, I was hit off my bike, and I got road rash, bruises, and abrasions, as you can see. After arriving in the ambulance and visiting the ER, I was able to head home, but I had been unable to go back to my normal life. Going to school has been a struggle every day, and it is impossible for me to play on my school's team, across team, right now. And hoping that you guys can add a crosswalk to make it safer for me, my peers, to head to school without having to worry about getting in a car accident like me. I would like to thank council members Adams and Hodge, as well as Mayor Woods, for all the support they have given to me during these times.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I think most of you may know me, but I'm Nicole Leonardi. I live in Tempe, Arizona. I am Olive's mom and homeowner in Altamira. It's the neighborhood, Tempe neighborhood just south of Warner and east of McClintock. Our neighborhood does not have bus transportation to Corona, so high school students that are not old enough to drive are forced to bike or walk across the very busy intersection of Warner and McClintock. For this reason, our neighborhood has been requesting a crosswalk be installed for many years. To the best of my knowledge, this has been discussed with the city as far back as 2015. We have currently been waiting over two years for a traffic study to be done. My daughter was not the first to be hit at this intersection, as you've heard earlier, and she will not be the last if we don't do something. We are so lucky that people stopped to help and that she was not more injured. There have been at least two previous incidents in the past two years, and there were also two fatalities at this intersection 20 to 30 years ago. Both of the fatalities were minors also living in Altamira neighborhood. I do not believe that a traffic study is needed at this time. We have enough direct evidence of the unsafe conditions. The time to act is now. I have also petitioned my neighborhood and surrounding neighbors to ask for their support in installing a crosswalk, and I'm happy to say that we have received over 250 signatures within the first 24 hours. I sent that out yesterday. 150 of those come from our neighborhood and surrounding neighbors. I have also received over 35 emails from concerned Altamira neighbors who have told me directly that they are scared to let their own children ride their bikes to school because of how unsafe our crossing is. I have not received any messages from people opposed to the installation of a protected crosswalk. The safety of our children is the most important thing that we can do as a society. Please consider this request so we can prevent any other unnecessary accidents. And a huge thank you to Vice Mayor Adams, council member Hodge, and also Mayor Woods. Thank you.
Thank you. And Olive, really glad you're okay. Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Mike Forst. Yes, please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Mike Forst, from Scottsdale, Arizona. I actually turned in a card for R. H. Super Landscaping, which is a public hearing item.
Oh, okay. We could wait that if you want, so...
What's that?
We could wait if you want to go to the public hearing item. Okay, I'll hold on to this then, so. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. The next speaker I have is Elizabeth Venable. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Venable. I live in Phoenix, but I lived in Tempe for several years. I'm here to speak on behalf of, or in support of, rather, of Austin Davis and AZ Hugs. I run a nonprofit called The Fund for Empowerment, and we run something called The House Leadership Project, where we encourage people who are experiencing street homelessness to participate in civic process. You may have heard of us, or you may have not, we received a federal injunction against the City of Phoenix for them repeatedly violating a wide variety of civil rights under the Fourth, Eighth, and Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. However, I don't want to focus on enforcement right now, even though I think Tempe's enforcement actually is in some ways more problematic than Phoenix's, because they have services. And frankly, you guys really don't, and never have. But in any case, I wanted to say that one of the most important things to know, I think, in terms of Austin's arguments, and really, the need for Austin, and how he is standing up for absolutely all of us that do this work... up for absolutely all of us that do this work, actually, is he's protecting and advocating for his own and all of our First Amendment rights. This is not just a free speech issue, it's also a religious liberty issue. Many people demonstrate their particular religious affiliations by service. And Austin and others, perhaps that isn't the primary focus, but it's certainly an element of what they're doing. I know that when I serve people that are in my community, and in addition, you know, in some ways make the city of Phoenix put in shelters, I know that this is part of my own spiritual practice, whether or not it's religious or not, and I believe that it is my free speech, to encourage other people's free speech, and also provide resources. Austin does tremendous work in the community. He works with low-barrier populations, which is part of why there's concern. However, a lot of people will ignore low-barrier populations, and those are the most expensive people to keep on the streets, absolutely the most expensive. If you don't accommodate the low-barrier populations, you're paying for a wide variety of services, such as ambulance, police, medical, all these associated services that if you were to house and feed them, such as Austin facilitates both areas, you would save actually a lot of money, because you're using that money in Tempe services regardless. You might as well stop with the enforcement that marginalizes people that are trying to bring people into a better situation in life and focus...
That's time.
Sorry, and focus more on real priorities.
Thank you. The last card I have this evening is from Shanice Shakir McLeod. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, good evening. I am Shanice Shakir McLeod, and I'm here to speak on behalf of AZ Hugs Foundation. I am not only a volunteer, but I also used to be homeless in this community. I also used to be a homeowner here in Tempe for about twelve years. I lived on Hardy and Baseline. I lived down here on Fifth Street and Hardy. I went through a series of struggles due to family issues. If it wasn't for his, AZ Hugs' help, I think I would still be out there, or worse. He, I now have seventeen months sober and a job, a very well-working job. And I know that volunteering for him every Sunday and coming out and doing what I can, helping him drop off mobile orders, you know, talking to the people, getting them into housing, getting them resources, getting them clothing, anything like that that they might need, that I feel the city, other resources funded by the city have not, like, I want to say, like, gone forward with, like, been diligent to do. He has taken all kinds of his time to make sure he can do for anybody and provide for anybody out of any time of the day or night. He is, his phone is always accessible for people who are in need, as well as families, not even just individuals, those who need detox, those who also are struggling from substance abuse, and those who are just struggling to get a new job and get somewhere better with their life. I am also a living witness of this. This man is a very bright and inspirational, helpful person to this community. He has done so much, and I would ask if you guys would please grant him the leniencies for us to continue on providing for these, for the homeless and houseless, so that way they could also get somewhere and become the better versions of theirselves, just as the few of us and the most of us have turned out to be, like myself. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. Yes, please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I submitted my request online, so I'm not sure if it got missed or what, but my name is Sherri Johnson, and I live in Phoenix, but I represent the Legislative District Twelve, which includes South Tempe. I'm here to ask the council and city manager to consider installing a pedestrian crosswalk at McLintock Drive and Lviv Lane. As you've already heard tonight, there was an incident involving a CDS student last week, and as I was discussing this incident with a colleague and surmised that someone would probably have to die before any action was taken, excuse me, my colleague informed me that her friend, who is also a student at Corona del Sol, died in the same area fifteen years ago. These accidents are entirely preventable. A pedestrian crosswalk, perhaps similar to the one at Rural and the Western Canal near the YMCA, would greatly improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists in the area. On the campaign trail, the mayor and recently-elected council members talked a great deal about making Tempe streets safe. You talked about increasing police patrols, installing speed cameras, and creating bike lanes, but none of those would have prevented these tragedies. I ask that you take meaningful action and bring this up for discussion and review before anybody else is injured or killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council this evening? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting and move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council, unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove separate public hearing items for a separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may request that any item be removed for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the consent agenda consists of items miscellaneous seven A one, bids and contracts seven B one through seven B nine, and there are no seven C items or resolutions this evening. So once again, any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none, were there any comments, Madam Clerk, received from the public wishing to address the city council on a consent agenda public hearing item?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll look to the council next. Are there any other items that you'd like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Hodge for the approval of the consent agenda. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. That takes us to item number eight, which is the non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First up here, eight A miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions, eight A one, is to request a development plan review consisting of a new two-story, twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty square foot office and warehouse building for Dupper Landscaping located at ninety-one forty South Hardy Drive. The applicant is Winton Architects. This request is located within the general industrial overlay districts and requires a public hearing with the city council decision. I see, Mr. Forst, did you want to come forward on this item?
Only if needed.
Only if needed, okay. Then I will look to see if this is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on item eight A one?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there's the applicant presentation.
Okay. Is Bob Winton here? Oh. Oh, he's doing, right. Okay, okay, so do you want to give the presentation, or you said, you said only if needed?
Okay. Right. Okay, does anyone want the presentation here?
Okay, you know, so a couple of council members said they would like the presentation, if you can come forward and tell us more about the project.
Okay. Good evening again. My name is Mike Forst, Sun State Builders. I reside in Scottsdale, and I'm here with Russ and Josh Duper. They're the owners of Duper Landscape, and Bob Winton, he's our architect. Russ and Patty founded RH Duper Landscaping forty years ago, and they've been thirty years in Tempe. They actually have their current facility just around the corner, up off of Hardy, to the west of Hardy, and I can tell you, they're a great family, they're friends of mine, and they'll be wonderful neighbors to the surrounding properties. Russ has had plans to build on this property for about the last eighteen years since he bought it, and now the time is right to proceed. So up on the screen here, we have the rendering. It's a office warehouse building. The textured block, various block textures are on the building, along with the glass and shade canopies. The site plan is here overlaid on an aerial. So the lot here is east of the residential project. I believe that was called Tempe Village at the time. And to the south of the project is a landscaped, you know, green retention area for the development. To the east is industrial, and to the north is industrial, as is common along Hardy. Here's a picture from Hardy, looking to the northwest. So north of the project, you can see an equipment rental company. The lot we're building on is there to the left side of the picture, and then you can see the housing off to the west. This is to the northeast from Hardy, showing the east side of Hardy and more of the commercial and industrial projects. This picture is to the southeast from Hardy. So again, more commercial, and then you can see our lot here to the southwest, more of the project's lot, and then south of that, beyond the wall, is the green space that you saw in the aerial. Here's the site plan. The building is oriented to the east side of the lot, along Hardy, a little bit separated from the residential. We have parking in the front of the building on the north side, and that's accessed from an existing driveway off of Hardy. The secured yard in the back of the property there is accessed by two existing drive entrances on Hardy as well. And here's the landscape plan. I can guarantee this project will be meticulously landscaped and maintained. And that's really all we have. This is the floor plan. I don't know if you care to see the floor plan. It's a mixture of office and warehouse, but I'm here to answer any questions you have, and so are Russ and Bob, if you have any for them.
Sounds good, okay. I don't think there was anyone who came forward for the public hearing, but since Mr. Forst is up here, council members, any comments or questions on this presentation? Councilmember Chin? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out to residents watching and in our community that this falls within the zoning required for the area, so there's no need for the additional hearings and approval by DRC prior to this, or review by DRC. I'm looking for the nods over there. Yes, so just fully for transparency, I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else from council? Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Forst. Appreciate it. All right, so with that being said, I will now look for a motion from council to approve. It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
No, I can't get my...
And Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I got it.
And that item passes unanimously seven to zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That moves us to item eight A two, which is to award a three-year lease purchase contract to Hewlett Packard Financial Services Company via IT Partners for BMWware Software and Services that are used by the Information Technology Department to support numerous software applications throughout the city. Council, is there any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is eight A three, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Tempe and Maricopa County administered by its Human Services Department, whereby the county will provide the city of Tempe with one million, one hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars in funds to expand daytime heat relief services in the Tempe area. Council members, any comments or discussion?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Garland, I think. Okay, please vote. That item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is eight A four, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designee to sign Amendment Number Five to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Tempe and Maricopa County, whereby the county shall provide the city of Tempe with program year 2021 funding in the amount of two million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars in home investment partnerships program funds through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under ALN fourteen point two-three-nine, in accordance with HUD CPD Notice CPD dash twenty-one dash ten. The agreement total funding amount shall be increased from three million, two hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents to five million, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents in home funds. Once again, glad my mother taught me how to do arithmetic. Council members, any comments or discussion?
Second.
Go for it.
It's, it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Chin. And that item passes seven to zero. Everyone's trying to get on the action up here tonight. It's actually good. It's a very participatory council. I enjoy this, so, for those of you watching at home. All right, the next item under the section is eight A five, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with Artistic Land Management Incorporated to provide landscape maintenance services to street medians and right-of-way areas. Let's see here, any discussion on this item, council?
Which one was it?
Eight A five? I think, I think Councilmember Navarro rightfully got in that first, and the second was on Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Good job, Randy.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is eight A six, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing a maximum dollar amount for an individual job order of up to one million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand and five dollars for the purpose of procuring construction services for the hydraulic system repairs at Tempe Town Lake Dam. Any...
It's all moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is eight A seven, which is to award a construction manager at risk contract to Aiken Garter Construction LLC for the infrastructure improvement Smith Road Apache Boulevard to University Drive project.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. That item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is to award job order number five for PCL Construction Incorporated for the hydraulic system repairs Tempe Town Lake Dam project located at one West Rio Salado Parkway. Council, any comments or discussion?
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That item passes seven to zero. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The items under the section will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearings and votes are scheduled for April twenty-fifth, 2024. The first item under the section is eight B one, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at fourteen fifteen North Mill Avenue, which is otherwise known as Rolling Hills Golf Course, and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
This one, the only first, first read, withdraw?
Withdraw.
I knew that was gonna happen. Not from you, but I knew someone was gonna do that, so. So, since there's no more discussion, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, 2024. The next item under the section is eight B two, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated communication site lease agreement with American Tower Asset Sub LLC for the lease of Cell Tower Site located adjacent to Tempe Sports Complex. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, 2024. The next item under the section is eight B three, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase and sales agreement between the city of Tempe and Blue Reef Properties LLC for the acquisition of the property located at 1915 East Apache Boulevard for a non-congregate bridge shelter and declaring an emergency. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 25, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance. Is that the same one? Yeah, it is. Yeah, authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase and sales agreement between the city of Tempe and Blue Reef Properties LLC for the acquisition of a vacant lot located at 1911 East Apache Boulevard for support of the adjacent non-congregate bridge shelter or affordable housing and declaring an emergency. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council members, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 25, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B5, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a ground lease between the city of Tempe and La Victoria Commons 4% LIHTC, which is Low Income Housing Tax Credit, LP, for the construction, development, rental, and operations of a LIHTC-financed rental project consisting comprised of 52 rental units, as well as parking, commercial space, and community space. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 25, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B6, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a ground lease between the city of Tempe and La Victoria Commons 9% LIHTC, LP, for the construction, development, rental, and operations of a LIHTC-financed rental project comprised of 52 rental units, as well as parking, commercial space, and community space. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 25, 2024. The last item under the section is 8B7, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a ground lease between the city of Tempe and Newtown, La Victoria Commons LLC for the construction, development, and sale of 19, 1, 2, and 3-bedroom townhome units. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council members, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 25, 2024. The next section on the agenda is the non-consent agenda. Orders is an item scheduled for second hearing and final adoption, and votes will be taken this evening. First item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a license agreement for utilities to Cell Co. Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless over certain city-owned land on West Court Way and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council members, any comments or discussion? All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the third and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay to modify height and parking requirements, and a development plan review for a new 14-story mixed-use development consisting of 239 dwelling units and ground floor commercial uses on .49 acres for college and seventh mixed-use located at 706 South College Avenue. The applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham, PLC. And I see Ms. Vaz. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, for your record. Manjula Vaz, Law Firm, Gamage &amp; Burnham, Tunor Central, Phoenix. As you said, this is the third hearing. Happy to make a presentation, but I know it's a long night, so would certainly love your support.
Sounds good, thank you so much. This is a public hearing item as well. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Any comments or discussion, or is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve, and I really like this project a lot. Thank you very much.
Okay, let me do this then. Motion made by Vice Mayor Adams, seconded by Councilmember Navarro, and comment from Councilmember Garland.
I just was wondering if there were any significant changes that were made that we should be discussing for transparency in this process.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Garland, there are no changes from the last hearing. I think we agreed with Jeff and Ryan. We just had to go through the process again since we had main changes at the last hearing. Thank you.
I just wanted to be clear, Lance. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Any further comments or questions from council? Okay, once again, the motion was made by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Seeing none, please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Vaz, appreciate it. That brings us to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. Once again, council members may request that an agenda item be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. This evening, I'm going to go ahead and call upon Councilmember Garland first.
All right, I'm ready. I, do you have money? Not so. I know, the mirror's going really fast.
Play me.
No, you're good. I'll talk about it a little bit. So we're going to, my next backstage pass event is coming up, and it's going to be on Wednesday, April 17, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and it'll be at this Tempe Center for the Arts. Y'all are going to want to come to this one because it's all about music in the city of Tempe. We are going, it's really celebrating the 15th anniversary of the Walk-in Wednesdays that have been going on at the Tempe Center for the Arts. And we are going to have, Walt Richardson's going to be sitting with me, and we're going to have a panel. Don Fassinger, who started the Walk-in Wednesdays, is going to be there. Josh Roffler from the Tempe History Museum, the curator of the renowned Tempe Sound Exhibition, and Justin Stewart with the Tempe Arts and Culture Commission and a local DJ are going to be there. So I just wanted to get the word out, it's going to be a lot of fun to be a part of this, and we'll show our slide later, but the slide looks really cool. I'll just tell you that in advance. So we, okay, so we hope that you'll be able to attend. There's lots of information. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me, and I'll be glad to share that with you again. It's going to be Wednesday, April 17, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And then I also wanted to, I just wrote a little note on here. I just want to say thank you so much to the students who came. I know that they've gone home already, probably to do homework, but I just want to say thank you so much for them coming out to speak at our council meeting. It is not easy to come up to the podium, get in front of a microphone, and talk to the city council, even if you're an adult and makes you a little nervous, but I just want to say thank you so much for the students that came out and talked to us about a very important issue.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Next up, I have Councilmember Hodge.
Okay, thank you. Yes, mine. But while we do that, I wanted to say the same thing, Councilwoman Garland, that we have phenomenal students, but listen, they're Tempe Union. We have phenomenal students. So I'm very proud to say my students are the best students in the world. So, and I'm waiting on my sign, so I'm just trying to waste time until I get there, but...
Sorry to read. I missed yours.
No worries, no worries.
Okay, so my breakfast with Brindada is on April 13 at 11:00 a.m., and it's going to be a really cool one because it's going to be at Cul-de-sac, and we're joining in with the Pedals of Palanza, so it's going to be a big one. Come out, come all, it's so fun. Not only do you get a chance to do all the fun stuff with the bicycles and everything, but you'll also be able to have the chance to go in, eat lunch, and they also have tours going, so please come out. It's going to be a great time. And it's at Cul-de-sac. And I want to congratulate Chuck Box. I mean, anybody who went to ASU, if you did not eat at Chuck Box while you were there, then you were not an ASU student, because Chuck Box is the place to be, and just congratulations on that. I think everybody who's went to a party and wanted to stay late, they came back, and Chuck Box was the place to go. So I just, I want to congratulate them on that, and that is all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Annie, will you please come up to the podium?
Annie!
You're in trouble now.
Yay, yeah!
Yeah, it's rare when staff gets pulled up here to get dressed down by the council. Now, the public may not know this, but this is my aide, Annie Mazzarella. She joined us, what, like two years ago from Governor Hobbs's staff, and we met each other originally, what, in 2019, doing a fundraiser for then-Mayor Guy, well, she's currently the mayor, but you worked for her, Mayor Gallego. And Annie did a great job of keeping me organized and making sure I was moving my obligations forward and not saying anything stupid in front of Mayor Gallego. So I thought immediately she'd be great in this type of role. So I was thrilled when she reached out a few years ago, was looking for a new opportunity, and that you chose to come here and be a part of our Tempe family. I think, hopefully you've learned that, you know, we're all, we all kind of get along, we all, we all, you know, have our own personalities, but you fit right in with everybody and kind of hit the ground running. And you were tremendously helpful in all the initiatives that I've pushed over the last couple of years, and certainly with the big one coming up here in May. So while I'm sad you're leaving, I'm excited for this opportunity for you. I think you, I've known you for, I guess, five years now, and you've always wanted to be in DC. So Annie did take a job for the National League of Cities, and she'll be moving to Washington, DC. So I'm excited for your new opportunity. We'll certainly miss you around here. You've done tremendous, a tremendous job, and anything that I can ever do for you in the future, please don't hesitate to ask, and I'm sure I'll see you in DC next March.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Keating. Mayor, permission to hug?
Granted. Hit the vote on that, there.
Right, exactly.
We have a place to stay now when we go to DC. We don't have to worry about hotels because Annie's volunteered to give us all a place to stay.
My goodness. She hasn't even moved there yet. She's already inviting herself over. My goodness. All right, let's, next up, go to Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there we go. 37th Annual First Responders Picnic. It's a great festivities, just a real celebration with Tempe St. Luke's. Sheila Bryant was a tremendous organizer to this. Sheila's been in ER ever since I was a medic and beyond that, and she is just tremendous on keeping this program going. But as I say, just giving, you know, the first responders just one day of food and collaboration and talking with past firefighters and past police officers, and it's just a real good celebration. So it'll be at Quanet's Park, All-American Way, and that will be the 37th Annual First Responders Picnic this Thursday, or next Thursday, 11th, April 11. That's it.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some good news. The ASU men's swim and dive team won the national championships, and that's for the first time. And 14 Sun Devils were All-American honors. So thank you so much, ASU, and giving us something to celebrate, and congratulations, Sun Devils, and go Devils. My next announcement is ASU's women's beach volleyball, they are hosting the Pac-12 tournament from April 24 through April 26. The competition will be in Tempe at 503 South Rural Road at Sun Devil Beach Facility. The games are free, which is the best news, and you can watch them on Pac-12 Network if you would like to do that. But please try to come out. It'll be, it's incredible volleyball, and it'll be so fun to watch. I am really, let me go, Arts in the Parks, right? Yeah, okay. We have four different arts in the parks coming up in the upcoming weeks, so come out and enjoy our amazing parks and weather. Scudder Park will be on Tuesday, April 9. Meyer Park will be on Wednesday, April 10. Indian Bend Park will be on Tuesday, April 16, and the times will be from 5:30 to 7:30 in the evening. Request for upcoming agenda items. I was going to ask for a much-needed street safety presentation, but the city manager already has made that happen, and that will be taking place on April 18, and I encourage everyone to come out and listen to the presentation. And I also would like to request a presentation for what the city can do to mitigate the spread of stink net. It's a huge problem in our community, and it's a huge problem in Arizona, and I just want us to do whatever we can to be proactive and try to do something about this stink net. I know Kim Gaffney Loza has been working on it, and Allison Porter has been working on it, so I'm really hoping that we can get a presentation on that, Madam City Manager. And then I also, I really want to thank our city manager for fast-tracking our street safety. That's because she has amazing leadership, and she doesn't wait for things to get done and slow-walk things. She fast-walks things. In fact, she races most of the time. So I just want to really, really give my heartfelt thank you. You make our jobs so much easier, and we're getting more done as a result of your leadership. That's all.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent graphics, thank you. I would like to congratulate and wish the Corona del Sol We the People Competition Government Team, congratulations. They have just earned their 17th, 17, 17th state title, which qualifies them to go to the national competition. For those of you that may not be familiar with We the People, it is a competition government on the Constitution, and it promotes civic values, knowledge about our democratic process, and critical thinking skills. And I would like to also congratulate the coaches. You see the picture of the students. The coaches are Coach Allison Lund, Justine Centeni, David Dotz, and Tom Bristol. And I'm a very proud Aztec up here, and congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. All right. And I don't have any comments this evening. I did a number of proclamations this evening, so I think I'm probably all talked out for the night. So that brings us to item number 10, the public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council? If so, please get my attention. All right, hearing none. That takes us to item number 11, which is adjournment. The next scheduled regular city council meeting is on April 25, 2024. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.